All right, let's call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's jump into item two A, minutes of the regular city council meeting on February 28th. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Do I have a second? Motion of second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Item two B, minutes of the city council work session on February 28th, 2024. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved, adoption of the agenda. We have one item to add, which will be item eight B, shade tree bonding grant program. And if there's nothing else to add or amend, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Item four, consent agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion of second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Item five, visitors and presentations, we have nothing scheduled. Item six, public hearings, 2024 pavement rehabilitation project. Mr. Copy, is this you?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, in front of us, we have our public hearing for our 2024 pavement rehabilitation project. And I'll go over a brief presentation and then can open it up to the public hearing. Any questions? So the area that is included in our 2024 pavement rehabilitation project is generally located north of Birch Lake Avenue, west of Bald Eagle, the street shown on the screen. Another area that we are completing is over by the Sports Center, south of County Road 96, including Sports Center Drive. In addition, as long as we're in the area, we'll be doing the Sports Center parking lots themselves. I don't have it shown on the map, other than the leaders there, because it's a 100% city project, not assessed. So those will also be bid as part of the project. So the project scope, we have a mix, and I can go to the map if we, back to the map if we need to. But we have about a 50/50 mix of streets that are being completely reconstructed, that don't currently meet city standards with curb and gutter, storm sewer systems. The other half of the project is complete pavement replacement. So back in the timeframe that these roads were completed, pretty light pavement sections, two inches of blacktop. We're going to propose to reconstruct those to current standards, to get those upgraded. We'll also look at throughout the areas, different utility improvements, including our reviewing sewer and water service issues, including any sewer Y, root intrusion and issues with those, as well as a new program that I've been able to do a few times in the past, but we're required to look at water services for potential lead water services. So we'll be doing additional review with residents to determine their water service condition and material, to make sure they are not lead and get those replaced if needed. We also look at different water main sanitary sewer repairs. Typically, we go in and we replace old manholes that are made of brick and are failing on the sewer system. On the water side, we test and look at hydrants, valves that need repairs. And then we also work with the private utility companies, such as Excel Energy to come in. And typically, they've been the primary utility coming in to do any gas replacement. So they would come in, they'll be coming in and replacing the gas veins in the area as we do those projects. Estimated cost and funding, the total project, or total estimated cost for this year is 2.6 million. Of that, about 2.4 million is the actual roadway project. And about $250,000 is for the Sports Center parking lots themselves. Of that, 2.4 million, we're proposing special assessments in the amount of just over half a million. The remaining would be funded through city, other city funding sources, including bonding. As far as estimated assessments go, for single family, for the reconstruction, the typical single-family lot within the area is roughly $3,300 to $5,500 is the proposed assessment. If they have additional optional sewer Y replacement that they'd like to do, or if we need to do water service replacement, once we do those excavations, determine the materials, that would add to that assessment as well. Those are pretty good deals for homeowners. Typically, if a, you know, as we see homeowners come in and have to do this on their own, not as part of a city project, they're $5,000 to $10,000. So it's a pretty good to be able to link this on for residents as part of our bigger street projects. And then the total pavement replacement areas, those are the areas that already have good curb and gutter, where we're just going to go in and do some spot repairs of the curb and replace pavement. Those assessments vary from about $2,000 to $4,000. And our assessment policy looks at the size of the lot, whether the corner lots, things like that. And then also add that, such as Sports Center Drive, where we have commercial properties or other properties. We do look at those individually. We have an independent appraiser that reviews that benefit and works with us to determine that assessment. I didn't put each one of those on the screen, but we do have them available and I've made those available to the property owners. As far as the assessments go, we assess over a 15-year period. The interest rate is 2% over the bond rate. The interest rate last year was 3.72. It's going to be a little bit more this year, but we won't know until the actual bonds are issued after the project is bid and we go for bonds. And the assessments will be payable on the 2025 taxes. So schedule-wise, we started with a neighborhood meeting back in November. We received the feasibility study in February and ordered the public hearing. We're holding that public hearing tonight, following my presentation. If council elects to move forward, we would go for bids, open bids in April. And with the way the winter is treating us, hopefully I'll be able to start construction right away. I would anticipate by early May that we would be on a contractor's schedule, bidding if council moves forward. And then typically, construction, depending on the contractor's schedule, we would, we typically say, you know, spring to fall, although it could be done much earlier, depending on what contract we get and what schedule we work out. So and then the last step in the overall process is to go and do the assessment hearing, where residents would have a second opportunity, once we get through the project, to appeal or question any of the final assessments based on the bid amounts. So tonight, we would follow my presentation. We would have the council hold the public hearing, where residents can voice their opinion for or against the project per Minnesota statute 429. That is part of the process that we follow for public improvements. And if council, after hearing testimony, decides to move forward with the project, staff would recommend that the council adopt the resolution that would order the improvement, would approve the plans and specifications, and it would authorize staff to go for bids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copy. At this time, I will open it up for a public hearing. We have three names on the list, so when they call your name, please come up, state your name and address for the record. And once we get through the three names, if anyone else would like to speak, please do come up, once these three are done. So the first name I have on my list is Terrence Berg. If you could come up at this time, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Terrence Berg, I'm at 4754 Shear Avenue. And just a couple of quick questions, the main one being, I saw the previous work in previous years, looks great. Parking, any ideas where we're going to be able to park? Are we going to be notified? For example, let's say I'm in my driveway, I'm not home, I come home, at the end of the day, I can't get out. How are we going to be notified of accessibility to our properties?
Sure, Mr. Copy, if you could walk us through the logistics of kind of how that works.
Okay, Mayor, members of the council, including the notices that we send out typically for each of these meetings, we put information, we had a detailed presentation back in November when we had our neighborhood meeting. We go through all those types of questions, as far as garbage service, mail service, where to park. So typically, at the end of every day, the road is reopened for people to get in their driveways. We, let me back up. So once we get a contractor on board and we move forward with construction, we would send out a very detailed schedule. So once a contractor, once we know that contractor, they know when we're on the schedule. We'll send that out, as far as when the actual work starts. We will notify homeowners either through mailings, door hangers, personally knocking on the doors as we go through with the project, notify you of any disruptions or interruptions to your street. Typically, in most of these areas that we're reconstructing today, most people have adequate driveway parking. Access is typically guaranteed first thing in the morning. And when you would come home from work or in the evenings, they're actively working on projects throughout, the projects throughout the day. If there's anything such as a utility dig out in front of somebody's house, we would go and notify them at least 24 hours in advance that we would be disrupting that. If you needed to get your car out of the driveway, we would work with the homeowner to get them onto a street that's not being constructed or just down the street in adequate distance. We've worked with people with disabilities or other issues to maintain access to those properties. So not an issue as far as getting people in and out, but you will be disrupted.
To be expected.
You know, so there'll be that process of tearing the street up. Then we might come in and do curb, and you'll get a reprieve for a little bit. Then we'll come in and do the blacktop, followed by restoration. So each of those steps aren't continuous, but you would be disrupted for a little bit. And then you'd have a little reprieve, be disrupted again. So it's an iterative process, but we work with people all the time.
Well, the part you said about like, when you go to work in the morning and come home at night, that might mean I have to go get a job.
They're hiring seasonals?
All right, I have a mic B at 1761 Third Street.
You didn't want to try that last name?
Yeah, I just, I-
That's okay. Just a couple of questions. I know that you did a lot of preliminary work and this was on the original, on the schedule for last year, correct?
Correct.
Just a question for you guys. Why was it delayed? And, secondarily to that, the engineer's budget, it was up on the screen earlier. What was the engineer's budget last year for the project?
Sure, I'll take the first one. We delayed it because it was a bonding issue to not go over a cap, and we had the public safety building that we needed to finance, so that's why. And since-
Kind of figured that, but I never heard that.
And I think many of you know, this, my road is being done, where my house is. And trust me, I wanted the new streets last year too. I can't wait for this project to be done, but that's, it was a logistical reason. So that's, that's the reason. As far as your second question, I'll defer to Mr. Copy on the budget and what it was last year.
Mayor, members of the council, as far as our engineer's estimate go, very similar to what we had last year. We always anticipate some minor increase in construction until we start receiving bids. We typically go out, we, you know, poll other cities, communities. No one's really gone out for any bids yet this year, so we don't have any kind of anecdotal sense of where things are at. We don't know if it's a normal year for projects, if it's a busy year, if it's a- So we really don't have that data yet to say what those actual costs are. But yes, anecdotally, you know, year to year, it does go up slightly.
I'm able to pay my assessment upfront, we'll do that without the interest. Those that are paying 2% above the bonding rate is, I guess, they'll have to pay more than they would have last year, correct?
That would be a correct statement, that typically, but we don't know until we actually go for bonds, with the city's bond rating, et cetera. Until we actually go for, and bid those bonds out, we don't know what that rate's going to be yet.
Okay, appreciate it. For the record, I'm for the project, I blank you, Mayor, I do want my road done. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Jordan H. at 1856 Second Street.
Jordan Han at 1856 Second Street. I might not just be understanding some of this stuff. So when we receive the final assessment, is that, is that the September 24th date? Is what the actual cost will be per household?
That is correct. So typically, what we do is, once we, this is based on estimates. If we get significantly lower bids than what we are estimating, typically, we've gone in and recalculated those assessments. So it could be lower, it could be higher, depending on what those bids come in. But typically, over my years of experience, we are typically the high bidder and typically the bids that come in are lower than what we estimate. It just depends on how much, whether we actually adjust those assessment rates or not.
And then, I think you answered it, but I just want to make sure I understand. We have the option to either pay it through our taxes over a period of time, or can we pay it upfront? So we have to increase the interest rate?
So Mayor, members of the council, as far as payments go, residents do have the option to assess it. And that was the previous screen, I can bring that back up. But typically, assessed over a 15-year period, and that interest rate is that 2% over the bond rate. So you have the option to do that. However, a homeowner has the option to pay that off at any time. Once the city certifies it with Ramsey County, the homeowner can contact Ramsey County and pay that off at any, at any time to, you know, to- If you're not quite sure upfront, you can have it assessed, and two years from now, you can pay it off if you have the money at that time. Otherwise, the homeowners have the option to also pay upfront to alleviate any of those interest costs. So once we hold the assessment hearing, we give 30 days to pay, following that assessment hearing. At that time, then, the interest starts accruing, and then we certify any remaining assessments to Ramsey County.
All right, thank you. And then, I'm on Second Street, so we don't have curb or anything, like no sewer. So will the street be lowered in order to accommodate that?
Mayor, members of the council, very good question. So it's going to vary depending on where you're at in the street. So when we look at creating an urban section in an area that currently is, does not have curb and gutter, does not have storm sewer, we look at, we go out there and we pre-survey everything. So we have a, our in-house surveyor goes out there. We try to match in to make sure driveways drain out to the street. We make sure that the storm sewer that we extend out into the streets, that the, everything drains to those low points. So some areas may go up to match homes, some may go down to accommodate that storm sewer. So we look very carefully to make sure that we don't create any low points to trap drainage or trap water and that the streets drain well, because when a street drains well, it lasts longer and we protect our infrastructure. So we look at all of those things.
And then, so like, for example, I have a concrete driveway that goes all the way up to the blacktop right now. If we have to lower the street, I'm assuming my concrete driveway will have to be dug into, especially since we don't have curb right now. Will my driveway get fixed, or will that be 100% on the homeowner?
Very good question. Again, Mayor, members of the council, what we do is, within the right of way, typically, the majority of the area, we're able to accommodate the work within the right of way or the area that the city owns. Any of that, you know, whether it be turf, whether it be driveways, whether it be other things that we touch, we will restore back to original condition. We'll, if it's a concrete driveway, we replace it back with a concrete driveway, blacktop, we replace it with blacktop. In cases where it makes sense, we will work with individual property owners, where we may have to go back a little bit further. We'll work with them to get temporary easements or rights of entry to do that work, to help create a better product for the resident.
So will this impact like our sewer and plumbing? Are we expecting like us to not have access to utilities during a period of time, if like certain things are being replaced?
Another good question. Mayor, members of the council, we, I'm going to start with public utilities first. As far as public utilities go, we may be replacing some hydrants or valves, or we may have brief water shut-offs for, for properties. We will notify people in advance if we have to do that. We need that water shut-off in order to pull the old hydrant or valve to put a new one in. The other instance for public utilities or, you know, water sewer service, if there is that fact that we, a homeowner has opted in to do the sewer Y program, many of the residents had their sewer services televised already under the program. And we determine whether or not they have any conditions that would warrant that replacement. The one thing that we cannot do ahead of time is, there are some unknown water service materials out there for that federal program that's coming down in the cities. We have to excavate a lot of the water services to determine what that material is. We'll work with each of those individual property owners to determine what that course of action is, to get that replaced if needed. So there may be a second shut-off for those individual properties, but we'll work very closely with those. As far as private utilities, typically, the gas company will operate very similarly to the city. They'll come in, replace their gas veins, work with homeowners to go in and get that service line reconnected. May have to come in and work with property owners to relight pilot lights for their water heaters or furnaces. So again, they work very closely with each of the residents to get that done.
And then is there like a phased approach to the project? Like the sports area versus like the streets that are doing the reconstruction and everything versus the ones that are just getting the blacktop? Is there an order of operations of what we're thinking that that's going to be done?
Very good question. So at this point, I will hesitate to answer that in detail. Often, or typically, what we do is, once the contractor is on board, we sit down with them in a, what we call a pre-construction conference, and we sit down and work out the, that level of detail with them, what makes sense. In this case, you brought up the, the Sports Center area. That's obviously a commercial area. The Sports Center has events going on, so we're working around events that they're holding, the skating show and things like that. We'll also work with, once we send out that final notice to residents, if there's special needs, we've worked around graduation parties, we've worked around weddings, we've worked around other things to help determine how we do that. Typically, what happens though, first is we come in and we remove the blacktop of most or all the roads. This is a pretty small area overall, compared to, you know, some of the other years that we've done projects. Next thing, we'll come in and we'll put the curb in. And then typically, immediately following that, we'll at least get the first lift of asphalt. So the asphalt is done in multiple layers. And then they'll do restoration and finish it up with a final lift of asphalt. So it'll be phased more on construction technique. Sometime in larger areas, we'll actually do it in, in, you know, in area-by-area basis. So we'll kind of wait and see. I anticipate this being more as a done in one block, it's small enough of an area.
Sounds good. I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the names on my list, but if anyone else would like to speak, now is your opportunity, please. And again, if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great, thank you.
I think I just have a quick question. My name is Sue Hildman, and we live at 4711 Campbell Avenue. And what I was wondering, so I noticed between, north of Fourth Avenue going to Lincoln School, that there's a sidewalk. And I noticed the Campbell that we're on, there's no sidewalk. And I just have concerns with that if, for pedestrians. And I'm just wondering if that's something that's been discussed, or, and if so, where, where would the sidewalk go? A lot of traffic through there, especially with, and Sunday mornings with the Catholic Church right there.
Mayor, members of the council, so as far as sidewalk replacements go, or sidewalk additions or replacements, go as far to the project. Looking at the project as a whole, Wood Avenue has a sidewalk, a current sidewalk on, it's very narrow. Does, it's very difficult to get city's snow removal equipment on there, it doesn't meet ADA requirements. So that, and it's not in the greatest condition. That piece of sidewalk will be replaced. The, at this time, there is no recommended addition of sidewalk to the project area. That being said, we look at and we review that as a more of a holistic citywide review when we do our comprehensive plan. That was done, finished up in 2019, 2019 era, so it's fairly new. So each, every 10 years, the city is required to do a comprehensive plan. Part of that is a transportation plan, which includes non-motorized pedestrian. So we look at different sidewalk gaps, and that was not an area that was identified as a specific sidewalk gap, per se, that would be added to the system. Theoretically, you know, sidewalk could be added to any street in town. There wasn't any streets that were felt that needed that addition, both at the comprehensive plan level, as well as this construction level review.
I'm just thinking, because I'm pretty sure we have kids that go from our neighborhood up to Lincoln. And so that's the only reason, that's one of the reasons I bring it up too. So I just want to bring it to your attention. And I'm not even sure if I want it, but, you know, because then you do have the responsibility, like the snow removal, like you're talking about. But I just want to bring it up for attention, so. All right, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the road construction project, please?
I'm Katie Cadetson, I'm at 1789 Third Street. At the November meeting, I asked if a surveyor could come out and look at our street, because there are several houses where it doesn't drain and we do have curbs. How do we get the outcome of the surveyor, whatever they report?
That being said, we will, those areas that were reviewed as part of the survey, if you want to contact the engineering department, we can meet you out there, we can look at it. In most of the areas that there are curbs, there are, I know there were a couple of homes that we did look at that, just based on the adjacent streets, how the home was situated and built on the, on the property, there's not much that can be done as far to the, at least this type of project, where it's just a pavement replacement. Now, and typically, we design our roadways to, you know, curb and gutter, everything the last, you know, 50-plus years. So to go in and wholesale tear out all the curb and redo the entire neighborhood is not practical under the, under this level of reconstruction or rehabilitation of that road, of the roadways that have curb on them.
So for the houses that have that issue now, the water and ice is going to keep pooling at the end of the driveway when this, when this project is done?
We will do our best when we come in to regrade things. We will do our best when we come in to regrade things. If you have, again, specific issues, we can handle those one-on-one with, if you contact our, the engineering department, we can, I go out there and individually, individually meet with residents who may have that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? All right, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. I'll just briefly comment and I support this project. This is nothing new and crazy. We've been doing this for two and a half decades and every year, a little piece of the city gets done and we're finally getting to the tail end of it. This is actually one of the, the last, you know, stretches of roadway in the city that don't have modern curb and gutter and updated streets. So I can't wait to get it done. I support it and council, we have a resolution before us, what we'd like to do.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just a clarifying question.
Sure.
Mr. Copy, one of the questions was about service interruption for utilities and things. Just want to just be clear, it'll be hours, not days or weeks. And those interruptions are like during a, during a construction day, right? We're not going to shut people's power off or their water service off for a day or two. Am I correct? Do I have that right?
That is correct. Mayor members of the council, typically those types of service outages last just a couple of hours in order to do those, you know, valve or hydrant repairs. And we do communicate those with people well in advance to, you know, have a few pitchers of water or, you know, you know, make sure they, you know, get in a shower or things before or after that if, if need be so. And we try to accommodate folks as best we can. If they say, you know, hey, we have something going on, this is not a good day to do it. We typically will work with the contractor to go to a different area, come back to one that's more convenient if, if there truly is an issue with cutting somebody's service at, at that typical or particular time or day.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have a thought, comment, question on this? If not.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution, resolution ordering improvements, approving plans and specifications for the pavement rehabilitation projects, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the resolution passes. Thank you. All right. Item seven unfinished business, we have nothing scheduled. Item eight, new business, City of White Bear Lake Strategic Plan. Ms. Crawford, is this you?
It is. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And I do have some slides for this, if you can pull those up. Thank you. Okay. So as you know, the city council and the staff leadership team met a few months ago, or just a couple of months ago, to develop long-term strategies and short-term goals for the organization in 2024 and the future years. So just to highlight what we, what this group did during that discussion, we considered long-term vision elements and developed strategy statements to define that vision, followed by evaluating the present status of the city and organization to develop goals list consistent with that vision. Then we considered areas of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities on the horizon. Lastly, we discussed and developed consensus around how the different functions of our organization need to work in order to be successful, establishing organizational expectations and values. So tonight I'm going to go over the report a little bit in detail. For just those that are watching, it is in the city council packet, but want to go over that for the public before the city council considers adopting the strategic plan. Paul? So we came up with, or the, the city council and the staff leadership team agreed on seven core strategies that make up action statements that identify the organization and the city's long-term strategies and objectives. So I'm going to go over each one just a little bit here. So the first couple, safe and welcoming community. I'm not going to go over everything, but just a few of the bullet points, you know, facilitate and encourage community connections, maintain appropriate staffing levels and public safety departments, maintain a welcoming presence, maintain our small town feel, maintain the historic character and charm of White Bear Lake, and strategically approach change through public participa, public participation. Next couple are engaged community responsive leadership. So utilize relevant communication tools to support two-way communication with the community, foster relationships, maintain civility and expect professionalism. Ensure that we are responsive to both the wants and needs of citizens of all stages of life, levels of need and background. Complete community, offer a wide range of lifecycle housing, partner and support thriving educational systems, create community and identity through a wide range of arts and Support redevelopment to revitalize local economy and business districts. So here we'd like to ensure business districts are attractive, walkable and accessible, just to name one of those bullet points. Regarding excellent services and values as a, the next strategy, we want to emphasize proactive budgeting versus reactive budgeting, maintain resources in a sustainable manner, maintain the long-range financial planning efforts that we have been going through. And then lastly, the seventh is dedicated and supported city staff. So ensuring that staffing levels are appropriate to meet community expectations, sustain employee retention through various opportunities, policies and strategic actions. Next slide, please. We also developed short-term goals, a short-term, short-term goals platform and work plan to guide us in the coming years. And so these high, we have a couple of slides of high priority goals. So just to define, to define high priority goals, they are goals that are, that were identified by at least three members of the elected body and as a top priority and also received support from the staff leadership team. There's a final few of the high priority goals. And then next we have opportunity goals. And so opportunity goals are defined as goals that were identified as top priority by at least two members of the elected body and they also received support from the staff leadership team. So next steps are for us to implement the plan. Also for myself and another staff members to work within each of the identified goals to develop action plans and establish, and the establishment of benchmarks to measure our progress with the strategic plan, in addition to finding ways to integrate the goals into our organizational processes. So that work will begin following the city council adoption of the strategic plan. And then the, the hope and goal is that the city council and staff leadership team will conduct bi-annual goal setting as an accountability measure. So we conducted goal setting in 2024. 2025, we'd have a check-in with council and the staff leadership team. And then the following year, we would go through goal setting again. So, and kind of follow that staggered approach. So we will be working on, as I said, implementing the strategic plan should the city council adopt it tonight. We would put that plan on our website, so that's available for the community to, to review and, and begin working within that internally. So that's kind of a high overview. If anyone wants to share anything, you guys were all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I'll just note and first thank Ms. Crawford for organizing the workshop on January 31st. It was in the two years of being mayor, the first one that I've participated in. I don't know to what extent the council has done that in years past, but it was, you know, six plus hours of, of the council and department head getting, department heads getting together and really doing a deep dive into what we want the community to look like long-term. I thought we had really, really good discussions, interacted well together, and I think this report nicely captures what we, the conclusions we came to. Some of it will hopefully we can achieve. Obviously, we can't check every box, but it gives us a good roadmap for where we'd like to go and some, some comments, some, some notes for continued conversation as this body deliberates future issues. So my, again, my compliments to Ms. Crawford and to the city council and all department heads for really working well together for what was a pretty long period of time, a good, long, kind of grinded out session with a lot of progress that came from it. So with that, we've got a report in front of us and a resolution. If we have any other comments on the session itself, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve that. Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think there's one thing missing from the short-term goal list, and I don't know if we talked about it a lot at the, at the retreat, but I think it fits. It's the zoning code update, I think is a short-term goal. We're, we're on our way to doing it. It's not like we have to say, but there's some other things on here that we're already on our way to doing. I think it belongs on the list. It's, it's going to impact a lot of the other items, you know, it's going to affect or influence a lot of the other items on the short-term and long-term list. So I think I'd add that, make sure we have that on the list. Otherwise, it's good. Thanks.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Crawford, in the spirit of preview of coming attractions, this being Oscar week, when do you, when during this 2024, do you anticipate us having the conversations about specific metrics, monitoring tools for the, for the goals and rejectives?
Mayor, Councilmember Bradberg, to be honest with you, I was going to prepare that internally, a document for staff to work within, place all of these, kind of section them out department by department and then have regular check-ins with staff. And then next February, because we already have a, quite a lengthy work session every January, I was planning on February, hopefully meeting with the city council to, to evaluate, you know, just a status, a progress update, where are we on those things? So, but if the council as a whole has a, has some other suggestions, we can, now's the time to talk about those.
Yeah. My intuition is that it's not, it's a management function, but it, it deserves some feed, the opportunity for feedback. So keeping us aware sometime later in 2024 would, I think, be appropriate and useful.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Walsh, just as a kind of procedural point, is it your goal, because it looks like we're actually adopting this document, to add a bullet point 10 zoning code update, or is it sufficient to, to verbalize it here at the meeting? What would, what would you like to see in terms of an outcome on what your request is?
I don't think, the resolution doesn't go into that level of detail, does it?
The resolution doesn't? No, but the.
I think, I think we just, some, at some point, somebody needs to just, I think, add that to the short-term goal list. I think, I don't think we need to take a vote on it. I hope we don't.
I mean, I don't see it as we do either, but we're, well, it's, we're, we're officially adopting what is the strategic plan and we have a document that says strategic plan. So that's, that's why I raised the issue. It depends on what you'd like to do. It wouldn't take much to add, to add a bullet point 10 under the proposed short-term goals for the zoning code update, so.
Well, if we need that, if we, if you think it's better as an amendment, I'll absolutely move to amend the.
I think it, I think it adds, I think it, it clarifies things. So why don't we do this? We don't, it's not properly before us. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution, adopting the strategic plan.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Would there be a motion to amend?
I would amend the short-term goals list to add the zoning code update process.
Very good. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion as to the motion to amend adding item 10 zoning code update for the proposed short-term goals? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to amend carries. So I have a motion and a second before us for the resolution adopting the strategic plan as amended. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the resolution passes with the strategic plan as amended. Mr. City Attorney, how do we do on procedural?
Darn good, right?
Very well done, very well done.
Very good. It felt good, it felt good.
Inside jokes, huh?
Yeah. For those in the audience who are watching at home, we've been really working hard to polish up so that we've got Robert's Rules of Order down pat and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's and we did just that tonight. So we're proud about that. All right. Item 8B, the Shade Tree Bonding Grant Program. Mr. Copy, is this you?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. So a pleasant surprise that staff received word that we have received a very large grant through the Minnesota Shade Tree Bonding Grant Program. It's administered, administered by the Minnesota Department of Transportation, or Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. I have transportation on my mind, sorry. That said, we received a grant in the amount of $499,800, which is a significant step towards the city dealing with our EAB or Emerald Ash Borer issue that we have. It was a competitive grant program that we applied for last fall. It's kind of continually waiting for word whether or not we got it. Many, many applicants, as you might imagine. So a lot of the things that we had to look at is, you know, what is the issue that we have? You know, how many trees? Did we do an inventory? Did we, which we did in 2018? You know, what are the, what's the ability for the city to carry out a project like this based on staff experience? I was trying to hit some of the highlights for you. Again, we have, you know, over 200,000 or 200, 200,000, I wish we, I hope we don't have 200,000 ash trees, 2,000 ash trees that we have to deal with. So this is going to make a significant dent in us dealing with them. The Shade Tree Grant Program is a two-step program. It, it helps fund the removal of those infested trees. It also requires that we replant as part of the program as well. So when we did the water gremlin settlement and the city received a host of free trees through that program, we used the, a third party to help administer that replanting and it went very well. We learned a lot from it. That was part of the experience that we put into this competitive grant program. So the, it allows us to both remove as well as reforest and restore the city's canopy in areas that would be devastated by the concentration of trees, that ash trees that we have in a lot of our areas. The areas that we submitted on as part of this application, generally between County Road E and County Road F, east of White Bear Avenue. It's the, kind of a very high concentration of Boulevard ash trees that we have. And just during a timeframe that we were coming off of Dutch Elm disease and ash tree was the next best thing. So unfortunately, we have street after street of ash trees. So that being said, there are a few things that we are not, we're not able to submit as far as costs go. And if you recall, when we went through our capital improvement plan budget and we look at these kind of things, there are, as part of the project, we cannot, once we remove trees, restoration costs, you know, where we remove stumps to revegetate people's yard, you know, boulevards is not included as a reimbursable cost. Staff time is not included. If we need additional assistance, that would not be included. The other significant thing is a communications plan or that public outreach that we need. So as part of the grant application, it requires significant outreach to those affected by the tree removal and replacement. So significant mailings and, and communications with those folks. So that's the other major component that is not included. So the next steps in our process will be, two of you recall from our workshop, probably going on a year, year ago, over a year ago, when we looked at going after the EAB issue we have in town, one of the first things, or the first two things that we're going to be bringing back to council is some ordinance revisions that will clarify ownership of Boulevard trees. Second component will be to actually adopt a EAB work plan that we'll have to submit to the DNR as part of the grant program. So how we're going to, you know, it's really reiterating what we put in the application into a formal plan that council will adopt and move forward with under the grant. And then if we get everything in order, the thought would be is that we'd be ready to do removal starting probably this coming winter and then replanting would start in the summer of 2025. Winter is the best time to get these mass tree removals completed to meet a lot of the, you know, removal requirements from spreading the infestation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions council has.
Thank you, Mr. Copy. So let me see if I can just distill this down in simple terms. We had, have. We had, have a multimillion-dollar issue ahead of us to remove all these infested ash trees, and this is a huge, huge grant from the DNR that's going to significantly defray the cost of that project. Do I have that right?
That is correct.
Wonderful. Well, my hat's off to staff and everyone who worked on the grant. This is a big, big deal for those that are watching at home that might not know, this council has grappled with and still will figuring out how we're going to spend two-plus million dollars taking out these trees and ideally replacing them. With that alone has a huge cost. So this is a big deal for the city and a significant cost deferment for us or laying off a cost that we would have to pay for. So again, my utmost compliments to city staff for making this grant happen, and we're thrilled about this. So with that, I would entertain a motion from council to adopt the resolution accepting the grant. Councilmember Edberg.
Mayor, would you, may I ask some questions first, or should, would you prefer to wait for a motion?
It's really up to you. If you have questions now, that's fine.
Thank you. I'd ask a couple.
Sure.
So, Mr. Cowpey, we have some city funds that we have dedicated to ash borer removal. Will, how will those funds be used to augment this specific project, if at all? And are they eligible to use for the non-reimbursable portions of the grant? So for example, here's what, here's what I'm trying to picture. We're going to go in and chop down trees. I support that. The future of ash in this state is not, they are not going to be long-lived. But we're going to leave stumps, or since the grant funds can't be used for stump grinding is what I'm hearing, and restoration, we're going to have a whole bunch of yards with stumps, and we're going to want to go back in and replant. Who's responsible for that? And is that a place for city funds? Or what's the thinking in back of how we implement a total program?
Mayor members of the council, as I stated earlier, the, that is one of the ineligible costs. The stump grinding or stump removal is part of the, this grant program. There's not technically a match, so we don't, we're not held to, you know, matching one-for-one dollar-wise, but we are required to fund those ineligible items. Those are that restoration cost. So once we remove the stump and we have this giant hole in the Boulevard, we need to come in, bring dirt, get rid of the chips, put grass back so that homeowners don't have a big crater in their front yard. So those kind of things, if we have to, as part of the removals, we have to repair sidewalks, things like that, that aren't eligible under the grant. So those are those kind of side costs. The other thing that, like I said, until we get to this detailed EAB plan, and, you know, this, you know, we're applying for these grants that are relatively high-level. So as we dig down and get into the details and bring that back to council, get bids, things like that, and actually get into the areas, we are, you know, we're looking at maps with dots on, you know, streets that indicate a Boulevard ash tree. There may be some additional trees that are not ash trees that are dead that need to be removed or make sense to remove that aren't eligible under the program. We would use those city funds that we have dedicated to the city's budget to cover those Until we dig deeper, until we actually get into the neighborhood, start this communications process, we're not going to know every one of those details yet, but, or there may be, as part of the program, areas that we remove the trees, we have to, like I said, at minimum one-to-one replace the trees with a new tree. As we learned with the water gremlin tree program, there's areas that, because of underground utilities or overhead utilities, things like that, that we can't put trees in those areas. So there may be ineligible, you know, stretches of ineligible areas where we won't get reimbursed because we can't replace one-for-one. You know, talking with the DNR a little bit upfront, there are some exceptions to that. But again, until we dive into it in more detail, we won't know those exact issues that we'll run into.
So, Mr. Cowpey, I didn't hear, so I'm going to ask slightly differently. Will citizens be on the hook for any of the costs of cleaning up after a, after a removal, or will city funds be used for that purpose? Or do we not know, and the plan has yet to be written, so you're going to bring that back to us for, for our review and understanding?
Mayor members of the council, based on past council conversations at that workshop, with the city taking over, or at least at this time proposing to take over full control of Boulevard trees, the city would fund those restoration costs, not leaving the community members with any cost at all.
And then our liability, or the liability that we're seeking to undertake, is limited to trees that are on the Boulevard approximately, is that 12 feet, 15 feet? What's the, what's our definition of the Boulevard that we're using?
Mayor members of the council, so what we look at as a Boulevard tree would be those within the city's right-of-way. That obviously varies throughout town, but you're right. It's that 10 to 15 feet on average, not on every street, but kind of that 10 to 15 feet behind the back of curb, that is typically still within the city's right-of-way, and what we are referring to as Boulevard trees versus a private yard tree or a, something outside of the city's right-of-way.
So private homeowners that have trees that are outside of the Boulevard, that's on them. We are only taking, this conversation is limited to those trees that are on the, on the city's right-of-way and boulevards?
That is correct. So under the DNR grant programs, the state grant programs, private trees are ineligible for any of the grant funding. So it is only public or areas that are controlled by the public.
And I think my last question is that, so do we have an estimate of how many dollars per tree it takes for removal, restoration, all of that kind of good stuff? The numbers that I've informally heard is that it's something on the order of $2,000 a tree. Now, I don't know if that's high or low or in a reasonable ballpark, but based on our prior experiences, what number do you have in your head?
You know, mayor members of the council, very good question. I'm not prepared to, I have a spreadsheet that I, that we submitted as part of the grant application. I did not print off all of the attachments to that application. I can definitely make that, but you're in the ballpark of that, a couple thousand dollars per tree that we're looking at. So, you know, 1,000, I'll say 1,000 to 2,000 dollars per tree for removal and replacement.
So...
Councilmember Edberg, I would just add, obviously, it depends on the size of the tree. So, you know, they're not all going to be one-to-one, but that's probably, from my personal experience in my private yard, that's about correct.
So as a point of just kind of getting our heads into a ballpark, if it were as high as 2,000 per tree, and we can play, do the math all numbers of ways, 2,000 into 500,000 gives us about 250 trees of our 2,000. So it's a meaningful contribution. We still got a long ways to go.
Mayor members of the council, so one thing that, you know, the, we obviously don't have costs yet based on some of the, I'll call it preliminary quotes that we received from tree contractors. We're hoping it's more in the lines of that 1,000, maybe a little bit over for that removal and replacement. In talking with those contractors, the more mass removal, if we can shut a street down from end to end and come in, cut all the trees down, do one cleanup, is a much cheaper option to do that. And then we're looking at maybe that $800 per tree for removal, stump grinding, that kind of component of it, and then another couple hundred dollars on top of that for replacement. So we're hoping it's more in the 450 to 500 tree range that we would be able to replace. So, you know, you know, waging on that 20% of the issue that we're, you know, sitting with right now.
Councilmember West.
I heard the word communications, and I know that the council has talked about a communications position but did not support it. So I'm wondering what kind of plan and kind of time commitment you're thinking the plan, the communications plan for this will need?
Mayor, mayor members of the council, very good question. Not sure I have a solid answer for you tonight, based on the, again, that water gremlin program. And it was in the neighborhood of about, per cycle, we did about four cycles, but we were, you know, close to 1,000 trees that we planted through it. There's a lot to do with the, and we enlisted a lot of different city staff members when we did that. A lot of it is, you know, taking phone calls, scheduling, you know, the locate meets to figure out where private utilities are, obviously, a lot of our private and public utilities are. A lot of the utilities are ours, so then our staff ends up out there, you know, our public works staff or water sewer staff end up out there doing the locates. There's letters, postcards, different social media posts, things like that, that we will be doing some citywide, just for that educational component of it. Others very targeted towards individual, or the targeted area, some of it individually targeted towards individual streets once we come in and start doing removals. So I don't have a, until we lay out that detailed communications plan, I don't have a detailed estimate for you, but I know it's going to be significant.
Any final thoughts? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Sorry, Mr. Cowpey. I'm just curious how you came up with, and it's probably a great area, the area located east of White Bear Avenue between County F and County E.
Very good question. So I briefly mentioned it in my discussion earlier, but it is generally an area that has the highest concentration of ash trees. Also, the grant application, and I'm going to, let's see if I can find my little list here, but, so it looked at different, you know, so we had to look at census blocks. So we look at what disadvantaged people are within those, age, income, things like that. So based on those 2020, or 2020 census block data, we can do a whole host of GIS analysis on the city and basically lay it out to give the city the best advantage of being, submitting a successful grant. So that's really what drove it. So when you look at, and not that, it's kind of an interesting GIS exercise. I'd be happy to, you know, sit down with council sometime, but we didn't vary significantly, but, you know, from area of area to town. But if you plugged all those kind of components into one, those, there's two, so we split the city into five separate areas, kind of equal amount of trees above, you know, the, kind of that 400 to 500 trees per area to get us to that 2,000. And we played with kind of boundaries and then started looking at that census data and, and we're not significantly different from each of those five different areas, but enough in those two areas along with that concentration of trees that it made sense to submit on those areas, as at least the initial priority areas.
So those areas are written into the grant in terms of the spacing?
Correct.
And so I guess I'm just kind of assuming whatever, that you just kind of take down trees until the money's gone?
Correct.
Okay. Just always curious about.
Final thoughts? Final comments? I would entertain, thank you.
Second.
Have motion second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is passed. Thank you. Item nine, discussion, nothing scheduled. Item 10, communications from the city manager. Ms. Crawford, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do. Thank you. Mayor members of the council, we did have a, an open house last Thursday here for the downtown mobility and parking study, and we had about 70 people, actually 70 on the dot, come to the open house, received a lot of good verbal feedback. We haven't received the results quite yet, or we haven't talked, met as a staff, but not sure there was a lot of written feedback on the post-it notes on the, on the individual boards, but a lot of good discussion. And so I just wanted to provide an update. So next up, staff, the project management team needs to meet, and then the steering committee will meet one final time, I believe, before the city council has a discussion about the potential recommendations. But we are working on an online portion for one more public feedback opportunity. So, you know, Mayor, Councilmember Hughes, Councilmember Edberg, if you have anything to add, or City Engineer Cowpey?
Yeah, I'll just note, just as a matter of process, this was kind of the last official public outreach touch point, but it's important to note that the work product will be a report and recommendation from the steering committee, which will serve the basis of this body having a conversation. I say that to underscore the fact that they are not set plans. They are, there's nothing set in stone. This was the preliminary step as part of a community conversation, because nobody sitting at this dais claims to have all the grand answers for what the downtown should look like. And we had to start with a good and robust community engagement, which is what this is, primarily the steering committee, which is representative of residents, business owners, the historical society, folks from the arts district, everybody we can think of to really have this conversation, along with our own expertise with engineering and public works to, to see what, where we should start with. And again, this was the final official public outreach, but the work product, again, will go as a recommendation to this council, which I am confident will have a good, robust conversation about what the downtown should look like. So this won't be the last chance for the public to weigh in, but it was just the last chance with regard to the steering committee's ultimate report and recommendation. So it'll be a continued conversation. My email and phone is still open for additional comments for those that might have missed out. I'm sure other members on the council share that sentiment and the online platform. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. So we're excited to see what the, what the final report, recommendation is of the steering committee and continue a good discussion about what we want our downtown to look at, look like. So just want to make that, that process point, because this is, this is a big, big deal. We've got to get it right. There's lots of competing ideas. I think my overall sense of this is those that maybe aren't quite on the same page, we're not as far apart as people might think. We're going to, we're going to tweak and pick at the edges and decide where sidewalks might go or be tweaked a little bit, but I, I'm only one voice among the council. I don't see anything dramatic changing to downtown, but the finished product will be something that hopefully we're all proud of. So anyone else on the council have a thought on that? Ms. Crawford, is that all you have for us tonight?
It is. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.